Welcome all of you to the December 8th. May we have a roll call, please? Counselor Batine?
Here.
Counselor Brooke?
Here.
Counselor White?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Yousaf?
Here.
And I would like to begin with, uh... Please come to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us all about your information. Good to see everyone again.
All right. Evening, Mayor Marbury. I'm Kara Croft, and I'm the Transitions Coordinator at Durango High School. I'm a paraprofessional, and I run the day-to-day at Common Grounds Cafe. My name is Cory McCarthy. All right. So this evening, we're going to give you a little information about Common Grounds Cafe, which the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board did a fundraiser for Noel Night. So I'll go ahead and start with our slideshow here. Okay. So let me get to the big presentation here. Okay. All right. So Common Grounds Cafe is a partnership between Durango Public Library, Durango High School, and the Pathways Program. As you know, the library opened in 2008 in its new location. Once the library opened, there were a couple businesses that tried to start a little cafe in the library. There was about two businesses, and they just couldn't quite make a large profit or a profit in the library. And so through this process of trying to find a good fit, there was a collaboration happening in the community for getting students' work experience. And so that's when Common Grounds came to be in the library, basically. It was established in 2014 through a collaboration with Durango Public Library, Durango School District 9R, and San Juan Bosis. And basically, it was a perfect combination because we wanted to give students work experience, but we also weren't looking for profit. And so it was a really good collaboration because we didn't have to make a huge profit. So a little bit of background about some financial aspects. 9R pays for staffing, which Cory is the year-round paraprofessional that works at the Coffee Cart. She's the job coach, and she assists students with cash register, making drinks, customer service, all those things involved with running a business. And all proceeds go back directly into Common Grounds Cafe, or we have an adaptive sports program cost. We give scholarships for students to go skiing in the winter with special needs. So students are involved in all aspects, but usually it depends on their abilities and what they can do. So some students just work on showing up and work on time. That's a goal that they have. Others are involved with inventory, marketing, the aspects of running a small business. And beyond working at the Coffee Cart, students learn additional employment-related skills, including getting on the trolley, you know, how to get to work, phone skills, scheduling, and communication skills. So these are all real-world, relevant skills that we work on through the cafe. We have partnered with some great local businesses, including Bread Bakery, Desert Sun Coffee Roasters, and Zubrafizz. So those are all the products that we have at the Coffee Cart. And we have quite a few success stories. So these are students who have participated in Common Grounds and learning job skills through the Coffee Cart. In the middle there, we have Adrian, who still works at Zia Taqueria. And then to the left, we have Rita May, and she was working at Bread. So through her experience at Common Grounds, got a job at Bread. And then we have Thomas, who used his Coffee Cart skills and got a job at Starbucks. And we have several, several, many, many stories, success stories of students graduating, moving on to having employment in the community. So as a direct result of the training at Common Grounds Cafe, over 80% of the students are now involved in additional work experiences and/or paid employment, and that's our big goal. We've gotten really positive community feedback. A lot of...I really like a quote in there that's regarding one student. A patron said, "I've watched him grow so much. He's making eye contact and smiling. I love it." So it's really fun because we just have people coming into the cafe every day, and they can really see the growth of students, you know, from where they started and when they ended. Sounds great. We've gotten quite a bit of publicity. We even had Nickelodeon, the show, the kids' show, come to Durango and follow Devin Parsons, who's the pathway coordinator around town, and do a day-to-day little TV special on what he does with the students. And right now, we have a coupon in our Locals First coupon book, so you can come in and use that coupon at Common Grounds. And I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to show you a quick little, if I can do it. Let's see here.
My name is... My name is Edie Delene. I'm the job coach at the Coffee Cart. I've been here since July, working with the students, first with the ESY program, and then with their regular school-year activities. Currently, 11 students work at the Coffee Cart Monday through Friday. They start at 9:30 with the setup. They work from 10 until 2, which gives them enough time to clean up and then head back over to the high school to finish out the rest of their school day. It's a completely individualized program, so some students are working on their customer service skills, some are working on becoming a barista or other food service tasks, others are working on really basic skills like counting money, working with the general public, and social interaction. So it completely depends on the student. It's very goal-oriented. I talk to them about their goals periodically, and we work really hard to work towards their own individual goals so that hopefully they can take their skills on to other employment elsewhere in the community.
Thank you so much. We're so happy for your success. And I believe our chairs, would you please come to the podium and introduce yourself and also your advisor standing so quietly?
Oh. Sorry. You're welcome. So I'm Alma Wolf, and I'm still at the Temkin. And we are the co-chairs of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. And so during Noel Night a few weeks ago, we hosted the Holly Jolly Trolley, where we did free gift wrapping in the trolley, and we asked for donations to raise money for Common Grounds. And so tonight, we would like to present them, the money, with a $260 check.
Thanks so much, Sarah.
Yay! So thank you to everyone in the community who has their gifts wrapped and donated, and we're really fortunate that we got to work with Common Grounds, so thank you guys.
Thanks so much for your support. Appreciate it.
And Ben, I'd like to thank you also for overseeing and helping the students with their meetings and the coordination of all their projects. And I was down there, I don't know if you missed the Holly Jolly Trolley, but I went in and had my presents gift-wrapped, and it was just a wonderful experience for all of us. And Noel Night was fabulous downtown, so thank you all for working down at Noel Night. We sure appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to be moving into the consent agenda. And so this is for, if you haven't signed in and you would like to speak to city council, I'm going to encourage you to go down there and sign up. Or if you are here to speak about a specific issue, please come down and sign up. Review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Number 6. Ms. Phillips, will you read the consent agenda?
Certainly.
This may take a little bit of time. We have one of the longest ones, I think, we've had.
Items 4.1 through 4.3 are approval of minutes. 4.1, the study session, November 13, 2018. 4.2, the special meeting of November 14, 2018. 4.3, the joint study session of November 14, 2018. Items 4.4 through 4.14 are discussion and possible action items. 4.4 concerns approval of the 2019 pay and classification plans. 4.5 concerns resolution R.2018-51, adopting fees for business licenses issued pursuant to Chapter 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango. 4.6 concerns an appointment to the Durango Local Licensing Authority. 4.7 concerns the appointment of the city's independent auditors for fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, and with annual renewals for four subsequent years. 4.8 concerns a six-month extension of a purchase option agreement between the City of Durango and Volunteers of America for a 3.1-acre parcel and three springs to be used for low-income senior housing. 4.9 concerns resolution R.2018-52, authorizing the Durango Historic Preservation Board to act as a reviewing entity for the state income tax credit program for qualifying rehabilitation. 4.10 concerns resolution R.2018-53, adjustment of sewer plant investment fees for the 2019 year. 4.11 concerns resolution R.2018-54, adjustment of water plant investment fees for the 2019 year. 4.12 concerns resolution R.2018-55, amending the spring and fall cleanup rates effective January 1, 2019. 4.13 concerns resolution R.2018-56, amending the solid waste and recycling rates effective January 1, 2019. 4.14 concerns resolution R.2018-57, accepting the addition annexation petition 238 East Village Development and setting a public hearing for the annexation, initial zoning, and conceptual plan review for February 5, 2019. Items 4.15 through 4.21 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of January 2, 2019. 4.15 is to consider an amendment to Section 25-134 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango regarding the utility refund program. 4.16 is to consider an amendment to Sections 15-17, 15-20, and 15-34 of the Code of Ordinances City of Durango related to the court cost, imposition of surcharges assessed in municipal court, and compensation. 4.17 is to consider an amendment to Section 23-72 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango regarding the food tax rebate program. 4.18 is to consider the Lrencon Preliminary Development Plan, 2605 Junction Street. 4.19 is to consider the Sinyet Preliminary Development Plan, 821 East 32nd Street. 4.20 is to consider the 28th Street Minor Subdivision Preliminary Plan, 2706 Junction Street. 4.21 is to consider a request from History Colorado for comment on the Anamis City School, 3065 West 2nd Avenue nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. Items 422 through 424 are final approval of ordinances. 422 is ordinance O.2018-25, amending Article 3 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Durango to regulate the use of motor vehicles on parks, trails, and open space, and creating exceptions for the use of Class 1 and Class 2 electrical assistance bicycles on hard surfaces and paved trails within the city, and declaring an effective date. 4.23 is ordinance O.2018-24, granting La Plata Electric Association, Inc., an easement located over a portion of city-owned property to install power lines for service to the new city of Durango Parks and Office and Shop, and declaring an effective date. That's the Moore Park Shop. 424 is ordinance O.2018-26, appropriating sums of money to the various funds and spending agencies in the amounts and for the purposes set forth below for the City of Durango for the 2019 budget year. And we had one addendum item that was inadvertently left off of the original agenda, and it's Item 4.25, and it's discussion and possible action concerning the adoption of Resolution R.2018-58, establishing transit fares for 2019.
Thank you very much. Would any city councilor like to remove an item from the consent agenda? I'll be removing 4.7. And city manager, I had discussed with you 4.13, only a small section of it. I'm looking to...I'll look to you for advice when we get to 4.13. All right? 4.7 concerns a discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of the city independent auditors for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, and with annual review... Can't talk. Renewal for four subsequent years. Ms. Brown, would you come to the podium, please?
We should probably have a vote on the consent.
Oh, sorry. I'm already ahead of myself. Any of y'all looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. The exception...
Item 4.7 and 4.13.
Second.
Roll call, please. Counselor Yousaf?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Brooke?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes, and now Ms. Brown. This concerns the auditors for the City of Durango, and so just to give some background, would you present the information?
Absolutely. So Article 5, Section 14 of the Durango City Charter requires that an independent audit shall be made annually by a certified public accountant licensed to practice in the state of Colorado. Historically, an audit selection committee has met to review proposals and, if necessary, interview firms interested in providing the services to the city. The request for proposals was issued on August 15, 2018, for professional auditing services for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, through December 31, 2022, a five-year period. A five-year contract period is contemplated, subject to annual review. Five proposals were received, none of which were a local firm. The selection committee members included myself, the city manager, the mayor, the mayor pro Tim, and the finance manager. The proposals were reviewed, and interviews were performed on October 26, 2018. It was recommended to appoint Clifton Larson Allen as the city's auditors. But it is now appropriate for the city council to formally approve and endorse the committee's selection. It is our recommendation to appoint Clifton Larson Allen as the city's independent auditor.
I was asked to take this off by a citizen. The fee for the audit will not exceed $68,000?
For 2018, correct.
For 2018. And so can you give us a rationale for why it's an annual review and also it's a five-year or four-year contract?
Absolutely. So we...our last contract with our previous auditors, which were Clifton Larson as well, was a three-year contract with a two-year extension at the end of the three years if council approved that extension. We talked about doing that when we moved into this as well, but we decided to do a five-year contract with annual review so the city council can look at it each year since we have had those auditors for the previous five years. And so that way, we have an annual review every year. So that was our rationale in doing the five-year with annual review. There's been lots of discussion, lots of research on, since Sarbanes-Oxley in 2002, when we, you know, we had lots of public accounting firms that were doing some illegal activities in the private world, you know, industry. And so lots of rules came in, you know, let's mandatory audit rotation, get the auditors moving through. Well, since that went through, the change, the decisions, and the research has showed that it is actually better to have a longer 10-year auditor, because it takes two to three years for an audit firm to come in, understand the processes, understand the internal controls. And for those first two or three years, they're just learning things, they're not necessarily getting into the deeper auditing functions that are out there. So the recommendations have been, we need to keep auditors around a little bit longer so that we can, so that they can really get into the deeper issues, the deeper auditing. So those recommendations, GFOA recommends at least five years at a minimum, and if not five years longer, just because once they come in, they learn it, that fourth and fifth year is when they're really getting into the data, where they're really understanding what they're looking for. So research has shown that in the first couple years of audit turnover, that is when you find a lot of fraud happening, because the auditors aren't in there, they're not understanding what's going on. So the fraud increases, the audit failures happen in those first couple years of a brand-new auditor. So the recommendations have been to extend that out and not have that mandatory rotation every five years. We have done that in the past, like I said, from 2002 with all the changes, that was kind of the recommendations, but the last five, seven years, that recommendation has shifted again to increase that, to get those auditors.
And Clifton Larson and Allen, they have other municipal government experience?
Absolutely. So they are a large firm. They...the office that does our audits is based in Denver, they're a multinational company, and they have lots of Colorado experience. I think they do the state of Colorado as well, lots of counties, lots of municipalities, lots of federal programs that we deal with. There's a lot of smaller auditing firms. In fact, we had five firms that put in proposals for our audit, and three of them, we felt, weren't qualified to audit our complexity. We bring in, you know, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars of federal grants, and those are tied to federal programs, and the auditing standards are pretty tough. And if you don't have experience going through that type of complexity, you know, they're not going to be a good auditor for you. So we had three that we felt couldn't even handle our complexity. We did interview two. The other company that we interviewed has not started auditing in Colorado. We would have been their first customer in Colorado. They're trying to shift into this market out of California. I think they were based out of California. So they didn't have a lot of, they didn't have any Colorado experience, which with Tabor and our other issues that we have in Colorado, that experience is pretty important to us.
Would you share, when does the auditor start showing up typically? And what, give me the calendar date.
Absolutely. So they are here usually in January for a week, and then they are here in April for, they work on the audit for three weeks. One week, they are in Denver, working remotely. Two weeks, they're on-site, so about a month of things spent with us.
And what departments do they typically look at?
They look at every department.
Thank you. Every department. And are there any questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tim was also in the interview process. Yes, sir?
Just one question. Julie, when you mentioned annual review, I just wanted a clarification. So if there was some cause for concern about the performance of that organization, would the council have the option not to pursue them?
Absolutely.
So there's an opt-out?
Yep.
Opt-out understanding. Okay, well, thank you. I'm glad that you...yes, sir?
What is the suggested timeline for that review, so that if we decided to change firms, that you could go through that search in a timely way?
Right. As you know, the auditors come to city council, they have discussions with the mayor when they're on-site in April, and then they are here again, excuse me, in June, to present the audit to city council in a study session. And I believe that that time is the proper time for you guys to review and make sure that they are doing what you're expecting them to do for you, because they are hired by the city council. So I think at that June study session.
Yes, we did ask quite a few questions during the study session that the auditors were there, and we were, I believe, all in attendance that day. Any other comments or questions? With that, Ben, I'm going to move to approve 4.7, to appoint the Clifton Larson Allen as the city's independent auditors for the fiscal years ending December 31, 2018, through December 31, 2022, subject to annual review.
Second.
Roll call, please. Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes. 4.13 was a discussion and possible action regarding a resolution to amend the solid waste and recycling rate effective January 1, 2019. I only wanted to pull one section off of this. We had a request by the Board of County Commissioners, and city manager, I'm going to look to you for information.
Okay, thank you. For the public's information, this is a resolution amending trash collection and recycling fees. And what we've placed on the dais in front of the council is a revised resolution, and the revision consists of deleting the section that says "Sustainable Program Fees." Everything else that appeared in the original resolution remains the same.
Okay. And so that's for city and county residents?
Correct.
That fall that use our city services?
Correct.
All right. And that is Resolution 2018...
56.
56? All right. So does everyone understand what I asked to be removed? With that, I will make a motion.
Well, I have a question here. This is a departure from the judgment of the city council at our retreat, is it not?
Yes.
And so I think I'd like to know a little bit more about why we're changing here.
We received a...
To clarify, the departure you're referring to is what?
The deletion of sustainability program fees.
Correct. That's, as the mayor indicated, the county asked us to remove that so that they could discuss with the city council.
They wanted more information about why county residents who were receiving city services were being charged for the $2.30. And so that's, we're working with the county commissioners. We will be meeting with them and explaining. I'm sure Levi Lloyd will be there to explain the benefits and the rationale behind this decision that we made.
And is the, if there's a delay in implementation of this or a decision not to do a charge residents outside the city, or users outside the city, then I would assume we're looking at a slightly different rate proposal for city residents?
You would. It would, I believe it would go up 20 cents.
Okay.
So right now, it's removed for everyone until we have a chance to work with the county commissioners, which we do often. We meet with them and have many different types of conversations with them.
So I would just point out before you vote on this, if you remove it, as this resolution indicates, it would avoid the situation where you implement a fee and then come back and change it. So that puts pressure on us to get a discussion with the BOCC sooner than later.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I'm going to move to pass Resolution 2018-56.
As amended.
As amended. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'll second.
A roll call, please. Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Yousaf?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes, we're moving into public participation, and city manager is going to get the sign-in sheet. Thank you all for signing in. If anyone wants to talk during public participation about an item that's not on the public hearings, then please sign in now. Public participation, this section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais.
City council will not respond to questions from the dais, usually. Citizens should address their comments directly to the city council. Citizens wishing to speak during this section of the agenda shall sign in prior to the start of the meeting, identifying their name and address on the form provided at the meeting. Citizens will be called individually by name by the mayor to come to the podium to address the city council. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city manager will signal 30 seconds remaining by raising his hand. Any audiovisual materials must be provided to the city clerk on or before noon of the day of the meeting. Elizabeth Helvey, would you please come to the podium?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Elizabeth Helvey, I'm the Executive Director of the Durango Adult Education Center, and I wanted to, one, let the board know about a valuable service that is in this community, as well as let the town know, and invite each of you, and the town as well, to our graduation ceremony this Thursday. The Durango Adult Education Center provides high school equivalency classes, such as the GED, so if for some reason you were not successful in a regular school, or you just came up through a homeschooling or a different approach, you can come into our center and study and get your GED. We also provide English as a second language, so people coming to this country who want to improve their speaking skills, we do that. We also have a career counselor on staff who can help you, once you graduate, either from the ESL program or the GED program, if you would like to look at your post-secondary education options, or move on into a trade or a job, we can help you with that, we have somebody who can walk you through all of that. We also occasionally offer community education programs, so Spanish language, computer skills, things like that. So we do invite the whole community into our center to learn as well. We have three locations that we work in, we have a program at the La Plata County Jail, helping jail inmates obtain their GED, and we've had tremendous success with that program, the number of inmates interested and the impact that it has on their lives once they leave the center, the jail. And then, we also have, in the last two years, opened a program in Cortez, for Cortez residents, and then, of course, we have our center here, which is in the Commons Building on Camino de Rio. So that is an overview of the services we offer to the community. We do have, our most recent graduation will be this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Durango Public Library, and we have, I think right now, we have 22 people who are graduating this fall. They will not all be able to attend the ceremony, some of them have already moved on to jobs or other programming, but it is open to the public, and we would like everybody to attend and encourage our graduates on to the next phase of their life.
Thank you so much for sharing that information with our community, certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'll be sure and see you Thursday at the graduation.
It'll be fun.
As will I. I, you know, have attended numerous times in the past, and find the, particularly the stories of the individual students to be just utterly heartwarming. You're doing a wonderful service for the community.
I'd like to thank Elizabeth, she's our new Executive Director of, of one of Durango's really high-functioning nonprofits, and, and what a service to the community, and bringing brand-new onboard, you're doing a great job, so thanks.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all your support.
Thank you. Susan Aristo?
My name is Dr. Susan Aristo, and I am here to speak to the board about the problem of homelessness. I appreciate the honor and opportunity to speak to you. I have recently accepted a volunteer position as advocate, health advocate for the homeless in Durango through the Community Compassion Outreach Program. I'm here to report to you about a meeting that was held last Wednesday evening, sponsored by the ACLU, and we were honored to have a guest lawyer from the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty come to speak to us. You will be proud to know that she said we had more people, over 100, at this meeting than had come to comparable meetings in similar-sized or larger towns. I want you to know that over 100 people in this community were, are very interested in this problem, including physicians, lawyers, professors from Port Louis College, social workers, clinical psychologists, small business owners and their employees. The important message that we have from this meeting is that there is a solution to homelessness. It has been proven, probably the only solution to homelessness that has worked in our country, and that is to provide small dwelling homes for people who are homeless, the so-called tiny home concept. They are usually built within a community, a setting where maybe 12 or 15 families or individuals can live. Some of the data to support this comes from Utah, which the state of Utah in 2017 decided to implement such a program, and after a year of this program, found that there was a 91% decrease in homelessness in Utah. The state of Massachusetts adopted a similar approach, and found after a year that they had saved more than $9,000 per individual, homeless individual who was housed in such a program. The savings they felt came from police time, police no longer had to go up and, as in our community, wake people up in the middle of the night if they're sleeping in a park, and take them in and check them in, not have a court appearance, maybe have some jail time. That all costs money. You have a question, sir?
No, I'm just letting you know that your time is running out.
Oh, okay. So, the benefit for the police force too, is that they are no longer focusing on a problem which is not in their area of expertise. They can go to do other things in the community by the time freed up, such as community policing and the things that they are good at and have been trained to do. If you choose this path, you'll be choosing the only documented solution to this problem and have the opportunity to make Durango a more attractive community to our residents and to tourists. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. David Peters?
So, good evening, Mayor and city council members, my name's David Peters, I'm a resident of Durango. My topic probably would have covered, touched on a couple of public comment things tonight, so I'll have to just go up front. So, it's, it's my observation that citizens are more upset with the city than, than I've seen in 11 years living here. The two main issues which you know, that they're upset about are the very large increases in past utility rates, the large annual increases in, in total spending. I am opposed to another utility rate increase you're going to talk about tonight, but I expect you'll pass it. I think people, especially low-income families, are really feeling financially squeezed, and more rate increases do not help this. You know, is the public at a flashpoint with more rate increases? Time won't tell. So, moving on, you know, last I checked, the city has over 20 boards and committees, yet you do not have a permanent finance committee. So when I did the research looking at other cities of similar size to Durango, I noticed in general they have quite a few fewer committees, but almost all have a finance committee. I strongly suggest you start a finance committee. Citizens with solid financial acumen will likely find areas to help in expense reductions, help ensure transparency on distribution of revenues to the proper accounts, and give the public some comfort in overall transparency. You know, further, you know, citizens do understand that they don't get a vote on utility rate increases since it falls under the enterprise, utilities falls under the enterprise fund, but they are concerned that monies will be spent out of the utility fund on nonutility expenses, real or not, that's perceived. There certainly is some anecdotal evidence that this may have happened in the past with funds being moved to parks and recreations. Also, as you probably know, the state tracks and analyzes cities' annual financial statements historically. Based on the state's analysis, Durango's expense spending increase over the last, say, six years are definitely in the higher category for cities of similar size in Colorado. So this is just one more reason to set up a finance committee. And one final comment is, you know, a citizen at the beginning of this year noticed that the December 2017 unaudited financials were not published on the city's websites. Accordingly, there were two cora requests, or public information requests for that information, which was denied. The reasons were a little disappointing and somewhat amusing. The first one stated they didn't exist, really, the second that they were privileged. So, I mean, you just can't make this stuff up. You know, this is the type of stuff that stirs up the public and certainly journalists when you deny public information requests. So, you know, the city really should work on improving, restoring some of the trust of the public, and a good first step would be to set up a finance committee with citizens on that finance committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, I'll be calling you back in a little bit. Kim Baxter, please.
Kim Baxter, 1393 East 3rd Avenue. So, during the time that I served on the multimodal board, the multimodal master plan was created, and one of the aspects of that plan was to provide the best possible bus and trolley service to our community. The goal was to allow seniors, adults, youth, visitors to travel conveniently and safely to work, school, favorite activities, and home. Since the development of the master plan, the state and federal governments have continued to reduce funding for transportation in our area, unfortunately. The result has been the need for Durango's Transportation Department to make major cuts to service in order to remain within a severely reduced budget. I would like to recognize the efforts that the multimodal and transportation departments have made to provide the best bus service possible for our residents and visitors with a significantly reduced budget, and they have achieved this while continuing to use available grant funding to leverage the value of our local dollars to accomplish more than could otherwise be done. So I would also applaud them for operating within their means. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. In fact, I'm just going to add, Ms. Baxter, that tonight on 4.25, the transit fares, there's going to be a pass. Instead of, if you want to get on the transit and go to site A and then come back, or you can use it all day long. And so, this is fulfilling the request by the transit riders. So the city is trying to do more for our citizens. Thank you very kindly. And Jeffrey Hamner?
Thank you.
Good evening, council, I'm Jeffrey Hamner, I live at 17 White Cliff Drive, Durango, Colorado. I came today to talk about how the transit has stopped running to the Human Resource Center, and just hoping that we can reinstate that route of the transit as soon as possible for their children and families that need to access the Human Resource Center on the regular, and it makes it extremely difficult to get there if they don't have the transit there. And I personally pick up children from Animus High School, and I see kids being kind of held and exhaustedly walking, and I know those kids personally, and they're going to the Human Resource Center. So, I just hope that we can find it in our budget somehow to reinstate the, the transit running up 160, because I know it's super helpful for those who actually need it. Also, I would love to propose that we maybe somehow pursue the land that is available that is owned by Winaka Enterprises at College Avenue, or College and 9th Street, or College and 9th Avenue, excuse me. It is the old Boca lumberyard space, but I propose that that be a spot where people could leave their tents up, maybe not permanently, but meanwhile, in this winter time, maybe for the next few months, because the exhaustion of taking down a tent at sunrise, not to mention the lack of sleep, because that's, at sunrise, is probably the best the homeless will sleep, and because of their lack of sleep, their mental state is becoming even worse than it already is. And I know that, I just know that some people are in very mal condition right now, and I'm just concerned for the city, because we are going to have lawsuits on our hands if we don't make amendments to the current camping ban, for we are putting people in a dangerous situation by having them take their tents down at sunrise. And I do believe that giving them a space or pursuing a space and letting them know that you're trying to help will certainly aid in the vandalism throughout town, and with everything that the homeless is dealing with and the issues that they're causing, I feel would be greatly helped by us providing services and/or a space for them to reside comfortably. It would give them peace of mind and would reduce, would reduce the crime, would reduce the efforts that the police are putting forth to enforce this camping ban, and I really think that it would help the entire community as a whole. If they had a place to stay, they wouldn't be sitting on the sidewalk downtown, is basically what I'm saying. So, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it, and I hope you will consider these things.
Ms. Brown, I need to clarify some things. Boca Lumber is owned by another individual, and that's private property, number one. Number two, Ms. Baxter alluded to the fact that the city had to cut, we lost over $800,000 in transit funding, and that difficult decision hurt all of us at city council, and so, we did ask the county commissioners if they could help with any type of funding going up 160 to the Human Resources, which is the county building, and we were turned down. And so, we are always trying to look for grants and possibilities, because we recognize how important transit is at this moment in time. There isn't the money in this budget for the transit that you're requesting, so we are always trying to look for funding for transit for people. And I have good news, that the county has talked about having a place, a facility, for homeless people to get out of the weather. And that's still under consideration, work, it's not anything that, that is set up yet, but just to let you know.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
And I just think they need somewhere right now, because it's very cold, and we really need to care for these people, or we as a city will get sued.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, let's move on. We're moving into our first public hearing. Oh, Ms. Brown, come on up. You had a comment, there was Mr. Peters commenting about December 17, financial records, so I'm going to let you explain, please.
Absolutely. So, we don't normally issue any financial statements for the month of December, because we're working on the CAFR. So what we do is, in government accounting, we accrue all the revenues and expenditures related to the previous year back to the previous year, so we are still working on general entries, booking expenses, booking revenues through February at times. Then we're booking assets, we don't have a financial report that's finalized, so we can issue them, but they're going to change drastically, so we've chosen not to issue them, because they aren't going to, they're drastically different by the time the CAFR comes out. So we, when, we did get that core request early on, it was because we don't, we don't develop a December financial management report for those reasons. We did get a second core request for our draft CAFR, which I was still working on, it was- It was still a working product, so we declined that, because I don't believe we used the word privileged, I don't remember, but it was still a work in process, it was still a working document. So that is why that wasn't released until the auditors were done with it.
Okay, so the auditors, you said, came in January.
They came in January for a week, and then they were back in April, yes.
All right. So any citizens that would like to see those reports, they're available January, February?
No, they are not available until the audit is done in the end of April, first of May.
All right. And that's because the auditors are working on them.
We work on them through February and March, and then we finalize the reports, our working document given to the auditors to be audited.
Okay. Well, I thank you for that explanation. And moving into 8.1.1, a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 3, Section 25, 114 in the Code Ordinances of the City of Durango, amending the charges established for sewer service provision by the City of Durango Utilities Department. And with that, Mr. Lloyd, I would ask you, oh, wrong one. That's coming up.
Mr. Lloyd has elected to defer to Mr. Biggs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Would you introduce yourself and tell us your position with the city?
So my name is Jared Biggs. I am the Assistant Utilities Director for the City of Durango. And what we have in front of us today is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 3, Section 25, 114 of the Code Ordinances for Sewer Service Provision by the City of Durango Utilities Department. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend existing city code to increase charges for sewer service within the City of Durango. The City of Durango has accepted the final rate study for water and sewer services per Resolution Number R 2014-55. That's commonly known as the WILDAN Study that was done in 2014. That study designated water and sewer rates in accordance with general ratemaking practices to generate revenues sufficient amounts to address operations and capital improvements. Upon the basis of that study, the City Council has made adjustments in each of the years from 2015 through last year, and has adjusted to provide for inflationary adjustments on an annual basis, and that's including 2019. In accordance with that, the proposed rate change for this year is 3%, and that is in base and usage rates to provide for that partial inflationary cost increase moving forward. And just for reference, the Denver-Aurora Lakewood CPI index that is used for calculations such as Tabor and other issues was, is actually, the projections are averaging 3.1. They don't generate that actual number of Bureau Labor Statistics until February. So we have to go with projections on that. These additional amounts will ensure that the sewer fund's ability, ensure the sewer fund's ability to maintain bonding covenants, provide for operations, and continue to make our debt service payments. The 3% increase is projected to generate $239,285 additional dollars into the sewer fund. And this, this is all applies to City Council goals, maintaining a fiscal position resilient to future economic fluctuation, maintain and invest in city infrastructure, and improve city facilities to meet the needs of a growing community. So it's a recommendation of the city manager, the city operations director, and myself, frankly, to, following the public comment period presented at this public hearing, thereafter make a motion to consider the adoption of the ordinance, amending Chapter 25, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango, governing rates for sewer service within the City of Durango service area, attached heretofore but as amended. And I will tell you about those amendments, so to speak. There's a member of council that serves as a great copy editor and provided a couple of suggestions. Two amendments were made to this. One was changing SS, and this is a value referring to suspended solids in waste. And the definition is technically total suspended solids, TSS, so we made that amendment. We also made the appropriate amendments to BOD, which is biological oxygen demand. Again, these are kind of technical housekeeping things, but we've got a great editor who calls my attention to these things.
Thank you. I'm sure there'll be questions after the public hearing, public testimony. At this time, I'm going to open the public testimony. And if you would like to come and address the City Council, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. The City Council members should refrain from asking questions or commenting during public testimony. We have an opportunity to do that, and we will do that after the public testimony is closed. So I'm going to open it up, and John Simpson, would you like to come to the podium, please?
Mayor Marbury, my name is John Simpson. I live at 1831 Crestview Drive. The problem with the sewer rates is we aren't all contributing towards the high fixed costs with our sewer system, in particular, the debt service payment, transfers to the general fund, and transfers to the capital fund. Estimated miscellaneous expenses that you guys approved in the 2019 budget, I'm sorry, the 2018 estimated ones that was shown in the budget was 4.3 million. This is our debt service, this is our transfers. These have to be paid every year, just like your car payment, it has to be paid every year, no matter how much we flush the toilet, we're going to have to pay that charge. Why isn't that in the base charge? It's there every single month. If we all ended up paying that 4.3 million, our base rate would be $60 a month. That would be fair for the families in Durango. You guys correctly identified in your budget entry to skip paying the sewer bills, you go on vacation from January to March. What if you're a family living in Durango with kids? Maybe who just had a baby and now has a lot of laundry and now has a lot of water. You get, you're rewarded with a big sewer bill. If you're a rich person who gets to leave the city for the winter, you're rewarded with a very small sewer bill. We all voted for this sewer plant. Why aren't we all paying for it? The rate study by WILDAN adjusted by this charge, especially for the county residents, was clearly in error. They overstated the cost to treat the water, and they understated the cost, understated the amount of sewer treated. This led to a very large usage charge, which county residents must pay double for. There could be justification for a small extra charge, but doubling an inflated charge is not fair for the county residents. They should pay the same base charge as us and possibly double the usage if that usage charge was calculated fairly, which it wasn't. As for the usage rate, we keep hearing how efficient this new plant is. If that's the case, why do we have the highest usage rate that I can find in the state? Do we have the most inefficient plant? Your rates indicate that we do. Mayor Marbury?
Thank you. I'm sure there'll be a response by the staff. And that's the only person that signed up to speak on this issue. So I'm going to close the public testimony and have questions by the City Council.
I would simply comment that one of the elements that led the City Council to set up the base charge and the graduated tiers, both for sewer rates and water rates, was the impact on low-income residents who have very low usage. And the, one of the things that was a revelation to me in the, when we received the WILDAN report and the consultant's discussion, was the fact that the allocation of base charge is in fact a policy decision, and there's no standard for that. And so it was a significant discussion for the council about how to set the base charge versus the usage charges. And I think there are a few individuals, as cited by Mr. Simpson, who are disadvantaged by the present structure, but I believe and I would stand by the choices we made. I would also reiterate that the steep rate increases that we needed to make in order to fund the wastewater plant and the much-needed future water plant was probably the most difficult decision that I've had to face on this dais. It's no, it was no fun. We know very, we knew very well at the time that the very steep rate increases was going to be a very painful one, not only for we who voted for it, as well as, and we are all rate payers as well, but also especially for our community residents. These are, however, essential facilities. And the challenge was that the kind of inflationary increases that we are considering tonight was exactly what had not been done for a very long time, an excessively long time. And when it emerged that we had these very large capital needs and needed a revenue stream to be able to borrow the money for them, it was imperative to do what we had to do. It was no fun. It's challenging. I wish we could have done the new rate study this year, but the fact that staff is fully occupied with completing a $50 million capital project made sense to postpone that study for next year. It is in the budget we approved two weeks ago, and although I will probably not be on the council to receive that study, I very likely will be a very, very interested spectator.
I will add that on January the 2nd, the city has a public hearing to amend the Code of Ordinances concerning the utility refund program, Mr. Simpson. And this will, this refund program encompasses the city water and sewer utilities, and it will be used to encourage applicants and to ease the burden on the applicant. So that is something happening in January, January 2nd. Are there comments or questions by the rest of the council? Mr. Biggs, would you come back to the podium? I've closed the public hearing, and so I'm going to ask, Mr. Biggs, would you respond?
I, I think-
What are you going to do with the 3% money? Where's that $200,000 going to go? What's it going to be used for, do you think?
Frankly, it's going to be a mix of uses, ranging from continuing the maintenance regime that we're running, implementing, hopefully, if other hearings go well, a FOG program to combat the fat oil and grease within our sewer system, continue to pay that debt service that is a significant chunk of change, and to continue to improve the system. You know, we've got a lot of balls in the air, as Councilor White mentioned. It's been a bit of time coming. I think we've been planning a lot for the last few years since the inception of these rate increases, and we're starting to see a lot of movement happen with a lot of projects. So again, with these additional dollars, we will keep up with increasing costs, right? And move those things forward. And I think it's accurate to say, you know, I am really happy to say, there is an RFP on the street today that has been downloaded 52 times to do a rate study. That is due back, and we hope to have those bits back by January 10th. We will be barreling towards getting an additional rate study that will evaluate and say, how is our current rate design performing, and what maybe should we change? So, you know, with that said, we can, we'll continue to be working to improve how this whole process works and improve the sewer system that we have out there.
And do we have old sewer pipes in the City of Durango in different residential areas that have problems?
I can definitely get you some video whenever you like it.
Thank you.
It's not very savory, but, but yes, I mean, we regularly go rod various areas, jet rod them, and my collection superintendent will call Levi and I and say, hey, we're missing a pipe. Pipe is not there.
Oh.
You know, there are a number of places where that exists. We replace it. This is what a lot of the operating dollars that we use go to.
Question was made about the county users. We inherit, this was done a long time ago, I think in the 60s, by other city councilors, to take in county residents with their sewer systems. Do we often find problems when we have county residents using the sewers out there?
There's a number of scenarios. We have, I guess, made intergovernmental agreements and accepted old sanitation districts in a number of areas within the city, northwest and otherwise. And in those areas, we have accepted deferred maintenance that they had on their behalf. You know, currently, we are working through an easement issue, and we're spending a significant amount of money ironing those kind of problems out to make sure we can continue to provide those services. Those do cost us money, and we do have to address them.
Thank you, City Manager.
I have a question for Mr. Biggs, if you don't mind. Prior to coming to the city, I believe you had a position with a department of the state government, and in that capacity, did you perform analyses of city budgets and rate studies? Maybe tell the public what your previous-
I did. My previous role, I worked for the Department of Local Affairs and the Local Government Services Division. You guys already heard it referenced, there is a program where that agency evaluates audits on an annual basis. That was something that I helped to conduct and had a lot of colleagues, and still have a lot of great friends at that organization. My job predominantly was to run the budget management program, where we evaluated every local government's budget annually. We, in many of these cases, they would ask for assistance, and we would go conduct small-scale rate studies on their behalf. We would go help them figure out financing conundrums for a lot of situations that, luckily, Durango got ahead of, such as CPHE providing new regulation and saying, hey, you have to have a new plant. Most places are sitting and saying, we don't have the money to pay for that, and really grasping at straws. And I used to actually try to think of ways to solve those problems for smaller systems.
Thank you, sir.
I just, one more question for Mr. Biggs. Do you recall when the financing was put together, bond financing for the project? Was it a requirement to that financing to have the inflationary structure in the rates?
So it is not a requirement, but there are bond covenants. So if the council were to see fit not to increase, right, we would continue to shave that margin that we are, that exists, right? We have to keep a certain margin, and what would happen eventually, and I've seen this happen in a number of cases, is the bond covenants would be violated, and they would, by contract, force the city to increase rates.
Whoa. Well, so we're ahead of the game. We're not waiting for someone to force us. We're doing it by small, small incremental pieces.
It's a much more prudent measure.
Would you say that one more time, please?
It is a much more prudent measure.
Thank you very much, for those of us that like numbers and analysis. Are there other questions by a city councillor? City Manager, didn't I read in the paper recently that Bayfield's increasing their rates? Help me out.
You might have, I'm not aware of that.
Yes, I believe I saw that story.
Okay.
By they're increasing, I believe, the, Mr. Biggs might actually know this better than I do. I believe Bayfield's increasing their sewer rates by 10%.
I believe they were doing both sides.
I know Farmington has increased their water and sewer rates as well. We pay attention to what happens in the rest of our region. Are there any other questions or comments? Not an easy thing for any city council to do. It was very painful when Dick and I were on the other council to listen to this. It was very painful when Dick and I were on the other council to listen to this. And sometimes you just have to make hard decisions. And now this is simply an inflationary piece of the puzzle that, as you heard Mr. Biggs present, will go to projects' rate structure. Hello?
Hello. Sorry, I'm trying to log into the computer for the next presenter.
Oh, thank you. Just in case a strange man, you know, you notice this strange guy going to the podium. He works for the city of Durango. With that, I will look for a recommendation from council.
I will make a motion that we consider adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango governing rates for sewer service within the city of Durango service area, which is attached to the agenda and will be considered later under introduction of ordinances.
There is no actual reduction of ordinances section, so...
Oh, this is it.
This is it.
Okay.
Again, remember that this one was also amended for Mr... So this is ordinance number 27.
Okay. In that case, I will amend my motion, or change my motion, to move that we approve ordinance number 201827.
Is there a second?
A second.
And roll call, please.
Councilor Bricky?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Patine?
Yes.
Mayor Patine Musa?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes.
Moving to 8.1.2, a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 2, Section 25-30 in the Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango amending the charges established for water service provision by the city of Durango Utilities Department. And I think we're going to see Mr. Biggs.
Again, thank you, Jared Biggs, City Utilities Director. So this is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 2, Section 25-30, Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango, amending charges established for water service provision by the city of Durango. The city of Durango, again, has accepted that final rate study from 2014 for water and sewer services per resolution R.2014-55, which designed water and sewer rates in accordance with general ratemaking practices to generate revenue in sufficient amounts to address operations and capital improvements. Upon approval of that study, the city council has increased rates accordingly in 2015, 2016, 2017, but did not increase them last year in 2018. The proposed rate increase for 2019 is a 3% increase in base and usage rates to provide for partial inflationary adjustment. Again, that Denver-Aurora-Lakewood CPI for 2017, which affected us in 2018, was 3.386%. And the projection for this coming year is 3.1%. That's the average between the two agencies that produce those projections. So this 3% increase in water fees is projected to generate $207,500 of additional fee revenue for the water fund. It, again, maintains a fiscal position that's resilient for future economic fluctuation, maintains and invests in city infrastructure, and approves city facilities to meet the needs of the growing community. So it's the recommendation of the city manager, city operations director, assistant utilities director, that the city council consider an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Durango governing the rates for sewer or water service... Yes, I'm doing both at the same time. I shouldn't have done that. For water service within the city of Durango service area, attached hereto as amended, and again, thank to my copy editor for additional amendments that I made this afternoon. To summarize those amendments on the water ordinance, the whereas number 5 reflected one of our old resolutions that called for a 55% increase. That was done back in 2014. So, you know, I picked the bones of old resolutions to draft the ones that I write today. And so I amended that to reflect an inflationary revenue increase instead of a 55% rate increase, obviously. Additionally, amended in Section D, again, within that 2014 resolution, there were past double water rates for extraterritorial consumers. So akin to our sewer rates, which people who live in the county paid double, right, there was a water rate that those same people paid double. That was rescinded since that point in time, I believe in June 2015. And so I changed that to reflect the current, they paid the same water rates as in-town residents. And then finally, changed the effective date to 1/1/2019.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll wait. We have a presentation of water, of my bill. Is that correct, Miss Lake? I think I have that. Just to show what a 3% looks like.
Sample utility.
Where's that?
And so this is kind of our side-by-side of what those rates would be on what is an average consumer. Average winter consumption is 3,000 gallons at this point in time. Oh. It's the wrong one. My apologies. I didn't...
It's okay.
Craft my slideshow. Uh-huh. That works. Oh. So you see the side-by-side of 18 versus 19 rates that illustrate that differential between... Again, my apologies on catching...
I think it says from 1576 to 1623.
Correct.
Somebody do the math, 47 cents.
And that is the base rate, right?
That's the base rate. I'm reading it.
Can you make it a little bigger?
Yeah. So that is the base rate particularly, is this 1576, which is currently, it will now be with a 3% increase, 1623. That is on a 5/8 inch meter. 5/8 inch meters are the predominant meter size that we do have out in the city. And there's an escalating base charge based on a larger meter size, and each one of those goes up by 3%. The consumption value of 3,000 gallons, again, that is our average consumption over the January, February, and March timeframe, so what we consider generally the indoor consumption value. And that would be a total of $9.21, going up to $9.49.
And that's a 28-cent increase.
And a 28-cent increase based on the 3%, yes. And you see the same here, for sake of argument, for the sewer base. It is going up 56 cents for that same 5/8 inch, and the sewer consumption going from 31 to 32. So you do see that that sewer rate is significantly larger than the water rates are. But that, again, is by design to make sure that we are meeting a number of various issues: operations, maintenance, capital improvement, bond covenants, and the like.
So it went up 94 cents under sewer consumption for 3,000 gallons. Just in case you can't read that on your TV screen. And spring and fall did go up, that's true, to make it pay its own way. And that sustainability fee will come off until we can come back to it. And the recycling surcharge, that $2.69, this was a presentation many months ago, that we are sending our recycling, which has a very high, it's over 80% in the city of Durango, 80-something percent, and we are sending what we cannot process to Albuquerque and waiting for the markets to change. And that's a Chinese market. So I don't throw away my plastics, I don't throw away my cardboard to go to the landfill. I recycle like mad. Come to my house, and you'll know that. So I believe in recycling. I believe in it for today, and I believe in it for my grandchildren's future. So I happily pay that. Thank you very much, Mr. Biggs. I'm going to open the public testimony. When you come before the council, please state your name and address for the record. Public testimony is three minutes. City council should refrain from asking questions or commenting during public testimony. Questions from city council will be held until the testimony is completed. John Simpson would like to speak on the water issue.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm John Simpson Steele, and I still live at 1831 Crescu Drive. One of the reasons that 2A failed was the fact that the city appears to be committed to increasing fees and increasing its revenue from as many sources as possible, whether needed or not. Raising water rates without providing a justifiable argument will only serve to increase the perception that you just don't get it. Staff recommendations is full of holes. Council should want to fairly hear both sides of this issue. The process of line, we have three minutes here, with no rebuttal of staff's responses, does not provide a balanced view. Rather than restricting public dialogue, you should encourage public dialogue. The only justification for water rate increase is that the Weldon Report recommends an inflationary adjustment. Staff, however, has failed to explain other parts of the report that do not support this increase. We are nearing $20 million in reserves, and that amount of reserves is growing by billions each year. Weldon projected a 2019 fund balance of only $4 million. You don't need more money. You were told that the rate increases didn't happen for 30 years prior to this one. That's not true. The fund balance in 2013 says otherwise, as well as do the list of ordinances that I can forward on to you to prove otherwise. Weldon assumed there'd be a second water treatment plant built by now. The current rates are based on the assumption that mayans would be nervous needed to service the debt of the new plant. It also assumed that an election would have taken place by now to approve the debt. None of that has happened. You are collecting money from users to pay debt that does not exist. It could be said that the current rates are needed for capital items unrelated to the second plant. The Weldon Report does not support this position. You are already collecting funds for maintenance and upgrades in addition to the debt service for the new plant. If the current rates are only to support maintenance, then another large increase would be needed if and when the second plant is constructed. We already have some of the highest rates in the state, and you have to convince voters we'll need to increase it more if you want to build the plant. Last year, you approved a new hire to get long-delayed projects moving, but the reserve balance continues to grow. Staff should be, shouldn't staff be required to prove that they can effectively manage and address the most pressing problems in a timely manner and on budget before asking us for more money? A new rate study is budgeted for 2019. The water fund is flush with cash, and there's no immediate need for the money that would result from this rate increase. In fact, you may receive less money because many people are ready to quit maintaining their properties out there because they just can't pay the bills. Proceeding with staff's recommendation makes no sense and will only serve to further cement the viewpoint that the city does not understand what the voter said in November. Madam Marbury?
Thank you so much. I'm going to close the public testimony. Mr. Biggs, I have questions for you.
Okay.
Okay. And I think you have the data in front of you about what's in the water department. I think I read it from Ms. Brown's report a few weeks ago. Is there a thought that there will be a second water plant in our future?
Absolutely.
Tell me the reason why we need a second water plant.
So we've identified a second source of water as far back as the Black and Beach Study in 1981, and have been moving forward towards that for a couple of reasons. Predominantly, in those studies, it talked a lot about the future growth of the city being one of those major drivers of a need for an additional plant, which is undeniable. That is one of the reasons, I mean, with a future growth scenario that we have developed and part of our master plan, we do have a preponderance of a growing city. But in addition to that, we have other reasons why we want to go ahead and have a second supply. That includes redundancy. That is a very significant issue that we have today. Currently, you know, I love the plant up on College Mesa. It is a great plant. It continues to operate, and I have great staff members. Levi and I have great staff members that do diligent work every day to keep that plant running. But it is a one-fail city, right? It is one failure away from a big problem for the city. While we can maintain the two different treatment trains in various ways, while we can maintain other plumbing, our filter beds and other things, you know, having that redundancy will be valuable, particularly with additional issues with drought. You know, this summer was a significant issue. We got into pinches of the summer where we had low flow on the Florida River. We had ash flows in the Animus River. Could we treat them? Yes, it would be much more expensive and difficult. But having another supply, the city of Durango does not have any reservoir storage, with the exception of our terminal reservoir and our shares in Lake Nighthorse. And so some of this is risk management as well as just our growth and our future, right? Some of it is risk management. And these things were identified in a number of the studies that have been from 1981, the 94 study, the 2004 and the 2006 study. These things have been discussed. And really, it comes down to, one, making bed for a larger community in the future, and, two, getting that redundancy to hedge against risk.
Okay, Mr. Simpson criticizes because we haven't built a water plant yet, but I think we're sort of in the middle of, almost to the end of, building a sewer plant. I don't think the city can do a lot at the same time with our staff. So how do you react to that criticism that you haven't built it yet? What's wrong with you?
Well, I take it pretty lightly because I've only been here a couple of years, right? So that's an easy way to roll with it.
Well, I'm not saying you.
But I also want to put the point on it. We reviewed this week a siding plan for that plant. We are in process of getting that plant sited, getting that plant designed, and getting that plant moving forward. So again, we will continue to work, we will continue to manage our demands, but we're moving forward actively. And I would say, you know, we're moving towards that future that we have all planned for, and we are going to use part of this money, right, to help get that going.
Is it prudent to accumulate money so that when the plant is actually going to vote, that it would cost less money because we have money sitting here? Is that a prudent financial...
It can be. It all depends, right? A lot of people would argue that we're making people now pay for a future water treatment plant. I don't think we're going to pay cash for the whole thing, but whatever we do have in the bank will help us buy down those costs, right? And in addition to that, I, you know, just sitting here and thinking of the comments, I do appreciate the recognition that we did hire a staffer last year to help us move and leverage some of these projects that we have had kind of stacking up in the queue. If you go to East Park Avenue right now, that's water money we're putting in the ground today. We are currently moving forward, as I said, with the siding study. We are finishing up the bid package for Florida headgate improvements, right? That is making sure our sewer supply is still available. You know, we have, we do have a significant fund balance. I will admit that, right? But we do have tabs to use a large share of that fund balance to get projects in the ground.
And will that balance also go towards the new plant? Is that what the plan is?
Whatever balance we have at the time, we will, you know, look at our menu of projects at that time and figure out what can we dedicate of this. at that time and figure out what can we dedicate of this to bonding this project or, you know, getting ahead with a cash payment on that project when it takes place.
Questions, comments?
We made a concerted effort. I mean, we took on the onus of 20, maybe three decades of non-performance by city council in adjusting these rates. And that's why we made a conscious decision to have an annual increase of approximately 3% or cost of living so that no future city council or the taxpayers in the city of Durango would ever have to endure an increase of the magnitude that was imposed on them two, three years ago, so that this would never happen again. And that's why tonight, we are discussing and probably approving a water rate increase. It's a logical incremental cost of living increase. It's not onerous. It's...we don't want this to happen to the taxpayers again. That's why we're doing this, and that's why we set it up this way three years ago. It was a difficult decision, but nobody ever wants to live through a rate increase like we had. And to be criticized for that is just, you know, I don't understand it. I don't understand the logic or the understanding of municipal government that goes into that thinking.
I can tell you that my water bill in 1975 was $10 a month. Did that go towards building anything, maintaining anything? Nope, it sure didn't. And then I've seen some changes. So I think that's understandable that you have to raise the rates to keep the mechanisms working. Do we have old water pipes in this city, Mr. Biggs?
Undoubtedly, yes.
Do we experience freeze and thaw and break?
November was pretty tough. I think we had a week where we had, every day that week, we had a break. Yes, we have breaks very regularly. And again, over on Park Ave, we had been planning that project for a couple of years, and I'm very happy to say we are actively putting new pipes in the ground. So we're working on these things, yes.
Other...yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Biggs for his clear presentation of the rationale for a second water treatment plant. I want to stress the urgency of drought preparedness. The senior staff of the utilities department, as well as a couple of members of the Utilities Commission, and several other city staff members participated in a scenario planning workshop in July. I was there as the Utility Commission liaison. It was a very, very sobering exercise, and my takeaway from that was that we cannot get that plant built fast enough. However, the siding plan is, I believe it's a consultant...I'm not sure it's quite where we are in that process at this point, but I know it's in the budget to have that siding plan in 2019. But we can't go ahead with that until we have authorization from the Bureau of Recreation to build the pipe from the bottom of the dam to the edge of the BOR property, where the city and La Plata Archeleta Water District intend to build a T so that the tribal members who are entitled to water from Lake Nighthorse can build whatever they need, and we will then continue taking that water to a new treatment plant and then distribute it both to La Plata members and to the city. That project, like the recreation of Lake Nighthorse, has been moving exceedingly slowly. So even if we had want...even if everything else had been in place, we could not have proceeded with the construction of the water treatment plant. The urgency of having that access to that additional stored water in the case of a prolonged drought cannot be overestimated. I fervently hope that all pieces of that can come together next year and that we might be able to go to the voters and say, okay, we are ready to go, and will you please let us borrow the money so we can actually get this done to protect the future of the community?
Counselor Bricky, do you have a comment?
Well, two things. One, the age of...in your discussion of the existing treatment facility, we didn't talk about all the days.
Sixty years?
I think 65.
It was built in 54, I believe, 1954.
I'm a 53 guy, so that's 64 years old. I can do the quick math. So, I mean, that...it's magic to me that that facility is kept up as well as it has, and if there's anything that goes wrong with the storage or the plant itself, you know, this community's in dire straits. That became abundantly clear during the Gold King spill, when, you know, we potentially had no new source of water, and we took pumping out of the Animus River, and we had what the existing storage that was available there at that moment in time. You know, we really...and we spent a significant amount of tax dollars on water rights that's sitting up in Lake Nighthorse at this moment, at an incredible rate given to us by the state of Colorado. So we are currently purchasing those water rights, and so until that new treatment plant is developed, there's no utilization of that water. I mean, how smart is that? I mean, we...but we secured that water in a one-time deal that was a great interest rate, and fully anticipating that there would be growth in our community that would have the demand and the need for that water in the future. I mean, we're thinking, not for next month, we're thinking for 10, 20 years down the line for our community, and to me, that's only prudent.
I want to thank the 205 city council that put down a down payment on the water in Lake Nighthorse. Without that vision, we wouldn't have our water rights in Lake Nighthorse today. And, Mr. Biggs, are we still on a drought?
Yes.
And how many days of water do we have in the water reservoir?
In the terminal reservoir, as I tend to call it, Rogers Reservoir, otherwise known, I believe we have, again, depending on demand, anywhere, at winter rates, we have, you know, four weeks, five weeks typically. If...again, with...that has a caveat as well, making sure that our Florida pipeline continues to work, right? We're making those investments today in the Florida headgate project, and so, you know, we're working at this in a multifaceted way. We're working on every supply source, all of them.
And I know several years ago, the reservoir was lowered and there was repairs to it. Maybe two years ago, three years ago?
That was this year.
I thought it was a couple of years ago. But at any rate, it's good to know that it's still there, still works. Did you have a comment?
We're doing another rate study in 2019, correct?
Yes.
And what do you anticipate that that rate study might show us? It will be a five-year rate study?
You know, a rate study, it will suggest being evaluated on anywhere from an annual basis to a five-year basis, right? That's typical of rate studies. I am hopeful that it will tell us our current rate structure is meeting our needs, that we don't have to increase rates by any significant amount, right? It may suggest various rate structures to help adjust and fine-tune some of these things, such as how much the base charge covers versus how much the usage charges cover. You know, these aren't wild questions or wild thoughts by any means. It's just a, as Counselor White mentioned, it's a policy decision that gets made, and they will make suggestions thereby. Part of this rate study involves them making suggestions to better meet our goals, right? And so, I do have a hope that our current rate structure will be proven to be meeting our goals, right, and hopefully continue to meet our goals. And they can, you know, we're always open for improvement, suggestion. We will take them all day. Happy to have them.
Can I ask another question? So you're saying that it's reviewed annually, and we, as we're doing right now, correct? And last year, it was the decision of council, we decided not to do the water rate increases, correct?
That's correct.
And do you think that some of that basis was the balance that we have currently? You know, with such large balance, and I know we have projects on the table and we want to save for it, but we all recognize the importance of saving for a future plant. But there is no doubt about the fact that it...these are tight times, and the rate increases are difficult. And so I just want to, you know, what...we're talking about raising $239,000 with this 3% water rate, correct?
$207. The $239 was a sewer.
Okay. Exactly what will those funds go to this year for that water rate increase?
So again, this year, it will go to fund operations. We have not...we are in a drought. We have not sold as much water. Our revenue projections have been down in this current year, right? So we will make sure we will continue to be able to do the operations and maintenance that we're conducting. It will be in part to fund our capital list, right? We do have a list of items that we do provide to council from time to time, and it will continue to feed our ability to actually do those projects.
Right. But with such a large balance, I mean, I guess, I think that's the question that Mr. Simpson's bringing up, is, you know, with that type of balance in the bank, is this...do we want to be...well, it's something to consider, I think.
Why don't you, at some point, send city council, you know, here's a balance minus the projects, what they're going to cost, to the best of your knowledge, and that would really give us a better, accurate picture of the remainder of the money?
Happy to do so.
Okay. Because you have to pay for these repairs or pay for projects or take care of business, and I think that maybe would help council.
I just...yeah, I recognize that, and I think that there is council support for increasing the rates, at least from what I've heard. But I do recognize that it's a difficult time and that we have had a lot of rate increases. Our sewer and water bills are expensive. And I do recall the discussion last year, I believe it was Counselor White that brought it up, saying that you thought that we should hold off, I believe, if I recall correctly, and you had council support for that because of the times that we're in. And so, I, you know, I recognize... Yes, Julie, please.
I just wanted to clear up a little bit. So in the 2017 CAPR, that was the 1231, there was about a $14 million fund balance in the Water Fund. And in the enterprise funds, that net position is classified as invested in capital assets. So that's your funds that are invested in our assets that are in the ground and the buildings, and then the rest is...
Go a little slower for me.
And the rest is listed as unrestricted fund balance, and that's what that $14 million is. And if I could get it on the computer, I can show you. But that $14 million includes all of those projects that have been appropriated that are sitting out there that we have not expensed are taken out of that $14 million. So we do not have as large of a fund balance in that Water Fund as everyone assumes. If you look at the financial statements and you don't understand what is included in those numbers, it would look like we have a large fund balance.
Okay, that's helpful. If...do you have any idea if we...if you were to, considering the funds, the projects that have been appropriated for, do you have any idea what that amount might be so we have a little bit better picture? Sitting here thinking that we might be sitting on a multimillion-dollar balance.
So, I mean, just sitting and thinking, and again, this is off the cuff, just based on my knowledge, last time I looked at our CIB project list, if we count those dollars that are in our current year's budget, the one that just had a hearing and is moving towards approval, right, I think we may have an available fund balance of $3 to $4 million. You know, with the admin billing, with all of those projects that I mentioned, those projects, because they're ongoing, once we get invoice, that fund balance then gets reduced, right? So, and another point to make is, we do not commit to do a project unless we have cash in the bank as well. So that is where Julie is mentioning, you know, that money is, I think, as a financial term, committed, so to speak.
Even the remaining balance somehow.
Right.
For future projects that we intend to do.
For projects that we've already appropriated.
Correct. Right, but even the other $3 to $4 million, that hasn't been appropriated. We're intending to appropriate it very soon thereafter, I would assume. Is that correct?
The fund balance is used for operations and capital, so yeah, it depends on what we bring forth in the budgets for you to adopt. So right now, in that unrestricted fund balance of about $14 million plus a little bit, there's probably about $3 to $4 of it that is not committed already.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, that's good information to know. It's not really $14 million. It's really about $3 million because of all the projects coming down that will be taken care of.
I would also mention that Mr. Biggs has presented to the Utilities Commission reports on the water and sewer funds where he includes fund balance less...what is it? Fund balance less depreciation, which is something that we can do on the enterprise funds, which if we did on the general fund, it would be wildly red because we don't have the money to update our aging buildings, but that's beside the point here. Those diagrams, which I found very, very useful, showed the sewer fund starting to rise very steeply, and then the debt service hit, and we're now down to about just pretty much level. It's clear that until we go ahead with the major construction associated with the new water treatment plant, that same trend will happen, but it's, you know, there are ongoing expenses which we're meeting, and I think the rate study will give us a clearer sense of where we're headed with that.
Mr. Biggs, I understand there's a plan to build a second water dock out there?
There is a plan in this year's budget to build, to rehab the water dock that exists today. We are going to make it where there are two stalls, and it can be used hopefully by commercial haulers as well as our residential haulers.
So we would encourage our county neighbors to come into the city and get your water dock card, you know? That's good fiscal planning on your part. We're still on a drought. There's going to be, you know, who knows? No one has a crystal ball, but I would encourage anyone who has friends in the county, especially who have wells that may be unpredictable, it would be to their benefit to have that water dock card from the city as insurance, I think. Thank you very much. Any more questions? You know, I'm sure we tried to answer everything. We tried to get all the information we can to our community.
This is ordinance 28? 28, okay. I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 2018-28.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Bertin?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yusuf?
Yes.
Madam Marbury?
Yes, and this is certainly one of my favorites. A public hearing to consider an ordinance submitting certain sections of Chapter 25, the Code of Ordinances for the City of Durango, amending definitions and discharge regulations to provide for a fats, oil, and grease inspection program. Something brand new for the city of Durango. All right. This is exciting.
Welcome back.
So, again, the purpose background behind this proposal is to consider an ordinance to amend existing city codes to implement tracking and enforcement where necessary of grease interceptor requirements within the city of Durango. Fats, oils, and grease have been and continue to be identified as a major contributor to sewer blockages around the city of Durango. In previous years, fog has been a major cause of between 40 and 70% of sanitary sewer flows annually. In 2013, a compliance order from the State of Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, fog was identified as a significant contributor to the city's non-compliance with permit requirements, and the order prescribed that the city develop a preventive maintenance program that limits sanitary sewer overflows or SSO incidents as a priority of them. As part of that response, an effort to avoid grease contributions was identified. As part of that response, an effort to avoid grease contributions was identified at that time. As part of this effort, the fog program plan had been developed and was presented to council, if you remember, on April 10th of this year in a study session. And the effort, we pride ourselves on the effort, including a lot of education and outreach with our food service establishments or FSEs, because we all speak an acronym here, moving forward. So it's the intent of this program to require the installation of approved interceptors wherever FSEs are. And in many cases, they already have them. We will register them, track them, and ensure they are continued to be cleaned. We know there are interceptors out in the system today that just haven't been maintained and cleaned in a while, right? And so the big idea is to make sure that they are cleaned and they move forward. So the program goals are identified as partnership between an FSE and the city, calling out that priority for education and outreach, best management practices where possible, right? Elimination of fog discharges and maintenance of both interceptors and water flow. Program concentrates on three parts: identification, installation of appropriately sized interceptors per the International Plumbing Code. We aren't making new rules, we're just saying follow the plumbing code that exists today, right? Food service establishments will complete through self-performance or contracting regular maintenance to maintain what's called the 25% rule. And that is to keep 25% of the capacity of those interceptors available for flow. And then finally, the FSE will maintain all those records. That way we can, when we make an inspection, audit those and make sure everything is on the up and up, right? Impacted facilities will be food service establishments categorized by their CDPHG retail food establishment license. So again, we aren't recreating the wheel here. We're latching on to definitions of food service establishments that already exist in our area. These include limited food service establishments, mobile food facilities, restaurants, school cafeterias, grocers, and correctional facility kitchens. More generally, those are restaurants, carryouts, delis, convenience stores, commercial kitchens, hospitals, school cafeterias, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, coffee shops, grocery stores, mobile food facilities, and the local jail. They will have to comply. So the fiscal impact we've estimated for this, for this year, we've budgeted $46,197 in salary with an additional $5,000 for tools and other items to perform inspections. These apply to comprehensive goals such as 1.2, supporting and effective organization with a high-performing workforce; 1.3, improving environmental resiliency and encouraging responsible stewardship of natural and cultural resources; 3.2, providing city services with efficiency and effectiveness; 3.2 again, which I must have typed, 3.2, the other one is 3.1, maintaining and investing city infrastructure; and 3.3, improve city facilities to meet the needs of our growing community. So with that, the recommendation is, it's a recommendation of the city manager, utilities director, assistant utilities director, by motion, to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the applicable sections of Article 3, Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances concerning definitions and discharge regulations to provide for fats, oils, and grease inspection program for first reading at the next regular council meeting.
Thank you. City manager, did anyone sign up to talk about?
Nobody did.
So there's no public testimony. I'm going to open.
Oh, did you forget? Oh, that's okay. Come on up. I want to hear from you. So if you will, if you didn't sign up, you have three minutes. The city manager will raise his hand, give you kind of a timing there. And if you'll state your name and address, sir, for the public record.
My name is Steve Woodruff, president of the Colorado Restaurant Association here in Durango, 36 Aspen Court is my address. So actually, Mr. Biggs and I met for well over an hour today, really diving deep into the whole FOGS issue and how FSEs won't be a part of the solution. We definitely want to work on a timetable that's realistic and make sure that it's a common sense resolution to ensure everybody feels good about moving forward. A couple of things that we did talk about, the compliance timetable, you know, we talked about, the compliance timetable said January of 2019. I thought that was a little, without an ordinance to be in there, or an amended ordinance to be in there, I thought that was a little quick. So we talked about what that timetable looked like, what that meant for Q1, for Q2, and so on, and what that year two and three left. So I think we came up to a good idea there. Maintenance logs, I felt like three years seemed to be a little overzealous, but you told me the rationale behind it being with the population of 25,000 is what that you're equating to. So I, you know, I'm not sure if, I think it might be more feasible for FSEs to do maybe a one or two-year maintenance log. And then with the anticipated goal, if we, you know, have a population of 25,000 people by the state, then we, now you have to go to a three-year log. We talked about, this is his quote, evidence of good faith versus technical default. So want to make sure that we're not being so restrictive in the violation matrix and making sure that we're being good operators. We talked about digitized centralized files instead of hard copies, the violation matrix, we talked about responding to the action timeline. We talked about San Juan Basin Health Department, unless it's an imminent public threat. I felt like the San Juan Basin Health Department didn't necessarily need to be notified. I thought if there is an imminent public threat, then absolutely, there's, you know, grease going into, you know, it's being backflowed into the restaurant, then absolutely, that's an imminent public threat. We need to notify the San Juan Basin. If it's just a leaky receptor, interceptor, then it's probably not that big of a deal in my mind. You know, we as operators have a lot of regulatory agencies telling us what we can and cannot do as an FSE. So we thought it would be a little, you know, a little overbearing to have one more agency being contacted for us. We're worried about, I don't know, we got the health department coming in after we already had this inspection. So we thought that was not needed. Historical building challenges, you know, finding that balance between historical buildings and what that preservation society looks like versus city code and ordinances. Maybe we talked about the other category in the violation matrix and maybe mixing that from the violation matrix because it was so ambiguous. And we talked a lot about best management practices, how they're, what those are versus required operational procedures, you know? To me, best management practices are more like guidelines, whereas operational procedures are more like, you need to do this. So we had a great conversation. I look forward to working with the city to pass something that's common sense and equitable for everybody.
Thank you very much for testifying. And I know Mr. Biggs will, is a good team player and wants to be, make everybody successful. I'm closing the public. Testimony, questions, or comments from city council?
I kind of shared Mr. Woodruff's concerns and about the rollout and don't know exactly what the, not being a restaurateur, not exactly what is actually involved in doing the log, the maintenance log, and all that kind of stuff. But I'm sure it's impactful and to some degree, but mostly, you know, something that we act on tonight, being implemented fully by January of 2019, is a pretty quick turnaround. So I appreciate that and I'm sure if we can work this out with staff, then overall, this is one of those unfunded mandates that we have to comply for environmental compliance. And I think it is part and parcel of our entire infrastructure plan. So I appreciate your thoughts and hopefully keep bringing them as this thing continues.
I thought when I read it, it was, the first year is all about education of all of these entities. Can you answer that question?
Yeah, so the intent that we had addressed in April of the study session and we continue to intend was that the first full year would be education. Obviously, now that we're trying to get the program kicked off, we've gotten through the budget process, once we get an ordinance passed, you know, we'll be hopefully hiring our one staffer, getting that person the appropriate training, and then having that person deploy out into the community, visiting FSEs and conducting education. For first full year, we wanted to have education. And as I talked with Dave, you know, we may need to adjust these timeframes based on when we hire, based on when we get a lot of things. And the one thing that will be unequivocal is we will make a very clear signal to our partners, right, in the FSE community, when those deadlines will exist, right? We don't want to beat anybody over the head. I don't want to walk into my local restaurant and have them, you know, not give me a glass of water, not be so nice.
Here it comes.
You know, we want this to be functional and as our discussion went today, you know, it's really going to be the food service establishment community that is going to make this program work, right? I can have an inspector out there, you know, inspecting time and time and time again, but if we don't have willing and able and participants in our FSE community that want to do this, right, that's where, you know, we can't make it happen. And I really appreciate the efforts that he's put in, the conversation we've had, and really a lot of these items that we're discussing, such as removing the other category, you know, these are administrative items, I think we can amend and tweak where we need.
I think that's great. I would also recommend using the newsletter of the bid, especially, you know, that Tim Oster is very good about communicating to businesses. And so that's another communication tool that I would heartily recommend that our city use for all of our restaurants and whoever comes under the guidelines for the fog. Any other guys?
I would simply comment that the, you know, the history of fog contributing to our line breaks and spills is very compelling. And there's a powerful reason both for public health and for the cost to our utility program to upgrade this program. I'm totally sympathetic to Mr. Woodruff's remarks and I'm glad we're not voting on an ordinance tonight. I mean, the whole point here, you know, the whole point of the hearing in this case is to try to make sure we get the details right. I'll just make a, put on my copy editor hat again and note that the plan description refers to the 2012 plumbing code. I think we're now on 2015. I don't know if that makes any difference at all in practice, but, you know, it's worth noting. But I wholeheartedly support the goals of the program and staff's ability to work with the community to get the details right so that we can have something that will in fact meet the goals without being an extraordinary burden on our food service enterprise.
I'd like to just reiterate that this is the only new employee to be hired by the City of Durango in 2019, one person.
A very special person.
A fog guy.
Fog guy.
Or woman, or girl.
Or whoever. Any comments from our other councillors?
No, I don't know.
I think it's a great idea, you know? We have, as Mr. Woodruff said, we have old buildings in Durango that we have restaurants in. They are a challenge from those interesting basements, you know, when you go down to Old Timbers, let's say, one of my favorite places to, there's very few new, new establishments in Durango. We typically take a site and remodel it, but we still deal with the old stuff, the old plumbing. And my family has been in the restaurant business for a long time, so I get it. And I certainly think this will help everyone. And that's the whole idea of the program, not to punish, but to help, especially with our sewer treatment. You know, when I read that it was, golly, what did you say up here, how it contributed, had a great, non-compliance. I mean, that's a great statement right there. It contributed to non-compliance. That's very important.
Thank you so much. With that, I will look for a recommendation from council.
I would move that we direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the applicable sections of Article 3, Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances concerning definitions and discharge regulations to provide for a fats, oils, and grease inspection program for first reading at the next regular city council meeting.
Is there a second?
One second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. Moving to 8.1.4, a public hearing and consideration of passing a resolution for the City of Durango to adopt the 2018 multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for La Plata County as its official hazard mitigation plan.
Mr. Hall?
Counselor Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. Here tonight to seek adoption of the La Plata County Hazard Mitigation Plan. The plan has been in the works for the better part of a year with a variety of jurisdictions participating. I'm just going to walk through very topically some key points on the plan, but not do a deep dive. Your agenda documentation did have a link to voluminous planning documents that certainly, if I can answer questions, I will try to do that. The reason for the hazard mitigation plan is really about resiliency for the organization, for the community, so that we can react to and plan in advance for certain things that happen. For instance, with the 416 fire, I think our, for instance, our incident command system was very finely tuned. We worked well with all the other jurisdictions in the community to make sure that we minimized impact of that fire. However, the hazard mitigation plan itself is a requirement of FEMA if you want to pursue federal dollars for projects. And one project that we undertook last year was the Crestview Ditch Project. It brought in about a million dollars in FEMA money that allowed us to do a flood control project that otherwise wouldn't have been affordable. So for us participating with La Plata County in this, it really positions us for a five-year period to have access to dollars for a variety of things, which some have been outlined in this plan. It doesn't restrict us from other things as well. And I'm going to touch on a couple of those things real quickly here. So the plan is updated every five years. We've just closed out 2018 is the end of the five-year cycle on this most recent plan. La Plata County hired a consultant, did most of the heavy lifting. Terry Hecker, who is our emergency manager, really did the heavy lifting on getting this thing brought docked throughout the year. Towards the final quarter of the year, we really pulled together a bunch of staff and honed in on some final touches on the plan portion that relates specifically to the City of Durango, because there's a great deal in this plan that relates to the larger community. So Terry and staff worked on that, brought it together, and I'm kind of trying to bring it to the finish line here. What we need to do is have this adopted by the end of the year. FEMA has already reviewed the plan and has given a general approval, given it receives the approvals of the various jurisdictions. And the participating jurisdictions include us as the City of Durango, we have Durango Fire Protection District, Fort Lewis Mesa Fire Protection District, the Los Pinos Fire District, but also Town of Bayfield, Town of Ignacio, Upper Pine River. And obviously, La Plata County is kind of the lead entity on this. They will again take lead in five years to do the update, will participate at that point. We had some pretty minimal costs in participating in this. Most of it was staff time. There was a little bit of in-kind cost that we had to bring to the table, but also a lot of technical assistance that really carried the day on this. The things that I follow within our section of the plan is really, we look at drought, flood hazard, geo-hazard, severe weather, and wildfire. And there's, so we'll be able to tap into FEMA dollars for advanced planning or capital projects that relate to these sort of things if we have an adopted plan and we're part of this process. The primary goals, as shown here, are to minimize loss of life and injury and to reduce damage to critical facilities and infrastructure, and then finally, reduce risks to property, environment, and economy. And that's the essence of what we're talking about here. And so what we're seeking is approval of the resolution. And I just will read here the recommendation. It is the recommendation of the city manager that the- It is the recommendation of the city manager that the city council by motion pass the accompanying resolution adopting the La Plata County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan as a hazard mitigation plan for the City of Durango. So with that, certainly, I know that is somewhat truncated. I think the plan speaks for itself. I think the intent is important relative to our ability to tap into funds, and it also puts us in a good position to be prepared for things that may occur in the years to come.
Thank you very much. City Manager, did anyone sign up for the public testimony? I'm going to open and close the public testimony. Any comments from city council?
I'll just comment briefly. Staff went over this in greater detail at the study session a few weeks ago, and I took that opportunity to take a fairly thorough scanning. I'm surely not reading, it's a very extensive document, but it's also very thorough. And I think it's a commend staff for, especially Terry Hecker, for the work that has gone into this. And the other thing is that, one of the things I've learned in various CML meetings where they've talked about the various disasters that have happened around the state, whether they're wildfires or floods or whatever, is the absolute imperative to have this kind of plan in place, or you may not be eligible for FEMA funding for reimbursement. So independent, I think it's even, potentially even more important for proactive efforts so that we don't face some of those damages. But it's absolutely critical if we have a really awful event that really comes into the city, then that we are eligible for reimbursement for emergency funding.
Any good comments?
That's a no-brainer.
Sure is. I wanted to thank Lee by Lloyd's department. This summer, during the fires, when we were potentially facing some floods that went on, that could have come into the city, Mr. Lloyd's staff walked and cleared debris out anticipating if there was flooding, that when it came down to the city, how it could impact us, especially along that Junction Creek area. And so I want to publicly thank all those men that walked the area and protected our city, just simply doing their job and protecting our city. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Please pass on my appreciation to your staff. With that, I will ask for a motion.
Go ahead. I've been doing all the rest.
Is there a resolution 59?
Yeah.
49. So, motion is to pass Resolution 59, adopting the La Plata County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan as the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the City of Durango.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Yusef?
Yes.
Councillor Pateen?
Yes.
Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. 8.1.5, a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango revising the application of certain provisions of the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act to Durango municipal elections. And Mr. Nelson?
Yes. Generally, the provisions of the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act govern campaign finance and regarding contributions, reporting on contributions and expenditures for municipal elections. Home rule municipalities are specifically given the authority to adopt campaign finance ordinances that are more stringent than the provisions of the Fair Campaign Practices Act. The state law has recently been amended to create some new categories of campaign finance committee, and one specifically called the Small Scale Issues Committee, which is defined as an issues committee is accepted or made contributions or expenditures in an amount that do not exceed $5,000 during an election cycle for the purposes of supporting or opposing a ballot issue or ballot question. So these are committees that are related not to candidates, but to issues, to ballot questions or ballot issues. So under state law, those kinds of committees are generally exempt from making disclosures about the source or amounts of contributions received or expenditures that is made. So, again, $5,000 is a limited set in state law. So expenditures of $5,000 in a state election or in a large municipality might be pretty inconsequential, but that amount expended in a Durango election to promote or oppose ballot questions could be significant. So the exemption from reporting committee for a small-scale issues committee could tend to create an uneven playing field with other municipal issues and candidate committees that could negatively impact the perception of campaign finance transparency in the city. For that reason, amendments to Article 6 of Chapter 2 of the City Code regarding elections have been suggested pursuant to the home rule authority of the city as follows. One, we would acknowledge and adopt all of the provisions of the State Fair Campaign Practices Act explicitly to apply to all city elections except as amended. And then the suggestion is to adopt a provision to amend the application of CRS 145-108, 1.5B1 to state that all issues committees, including those defined as small-scale issues committees in the Fair Campaign Practices Act, be required to disclose contributions and expenditures as otherwise required by state law. Those provisions require that any contribution of $20 or more be reported along with names and addresses of contributors, and that expenditures be itemized on reports filed with the city clerk under the Fair Campaign Practices Act.
Thank you very much. Was there anyone signed up for public testimony? I'm going to open and close the public testimony. Are there any questions or comments by city council?
One brief comment, just, I think, the importance of transparency of who is funding positions in election is a very important one. Nationally, we suffer from that. Locally, we can do something about it for this limited subset. That it matters a great deal to us.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
I would just say that the point about the $5,000 being substantial in our community, I think that's a super valid point and one that is extremely relevant as someone who just ran for elected office not too long ago. That $5,000 was, you know, that's about all anybody spends to run for office in the town. These other folks should have to make us aware of their presence.
And did you have to submit documents?
Every dollar, yeah.
Did you have to submit who contributed and how you spent your money?
All the way.
So you were very transparent, and in fact, the records are there in this Phillips office, I think, if anybody ever wants to come look.
That's right.
Okay. We like to be transparent in the City of Durango. With that, I will close the public hearing and ask for a decision by city council.
I'll make a motion to approve a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango revising the application of certain provisions of the Code of Fair Campaign Practices Act to Durango municipal elections. That would be Resolution Number 2000R.
This will be an ordinance, I haven't drafted it yet.
Okay. So that is, remains unnumbered.
It will be unnumbered, and it's not, we're not prepared to adopt tonight. I will, actually, the recommendation is that we draft an ordinance.
Okay. So revise that to ask the city attorney to prepare the ordinance, amending Article 5, 6 of Chapter 2 of the City Code of Ordinances to revise the application of Section 1-145-108 and 1.5B1 of the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act to all Durango municipal elections, and declaring an effective date.
When would this go into effect?
Well, I would bring back a draft, I would bring back an ordinance at the next meeting. So we, first reading on January, whatever, January 2nd, is that the two? So then the second reading would be January, whatever the second meeting in January is, so 10 days thereafter. So it would be effective, it should be effective before the end of January.
So it would impact any, anyone who wants to run something? How does that really work? Okay?
Well, it would be effective for the upcoming municipal elections.
Okay, that's what, that was my.
Again, this particular item only applied to issues committees. I mean, candidate committees are already required to do this.
Absolutely.
So as you pointed out, so this would apply to any issues committees, both, I mean, right now, council hasn't made a decision to put anything on the ballot in April, but if there were another ballot question, then it would govern that. If not, in future ballot questions, it would apply.
This would guide it, for transparency and honesty and good information for our community. Okay. Let's see, did we have?
Second, I'll second.
Second? Roll call, please.
Councillor Pateen?
Yes.
Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yusef?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Absolutely, yes. And with that, we're going to go into council reports and actions.
I do have something this evening. I just, a couple of the folks that came up to the dais tonight talked about the community meeting that took place last week in regard to homelessness, and Mayor Protem Yusef and I both attended that meeting. I wasn't there for the entirety, as I was coming off of the Parks and Rec Board meeting as well, but I just wanted to comment on it. I thought it was impressive how many people showed up at the meeting from the community, concerned citizens of all types in the audience, and the discussion was interesting. The part of the speech I got to see from the speakers really related to one of the ideas that was shared tonight on the dais, that there is a solution to the homelessness issue, and it's housing. And I thought, well, yeah, that is true. And I think one of the things that our community doesn't always see is all the work that many of the staff members are doing right now behind the scenes that you don't see in these sessions until we actually have something to act upon. But many of the members of the county and the city staff are working diligently, pursuing those opportunities in the communities where they exist, and the pursuit of a strategic plan relevant to that same issue, and the pursuit of the, hopefully, the not-for-profit organization that would put all of that together and help us proceed into the future and provide housing for the neediest individuals in the community. We had a great opportunity to sit down at a table with numerous folks that were there and have one-on-one conversations. And what was great about it, honestly, was to be able to answer questions with those folks about initiatives that we already talked about, that they may not have seen in the paper, they may not have seen on the dais at any of these council sessions, but I think it was a really valuable thing to do and enlightening to me, and I'm looking forward to some of the next steps that are already well underway and may not be as readily apparent in the media or any of the other sources of information our citizens get.
Mayor?
Yes, I would just add to that. Thank you for that report. Councillor Pateen? I thought it was, I too thought, was impressed by the attendance at the event, and a great group of individuals at the table, neighbors and homeless residents themselves. So there were some really good discussions. And one of the things I did want to add is that I took away from the speaker, her name was Twistia Baumann from the National Law Center on Homelessness and Poverty, and she talked about how this is a community-wide issue, and it requires an entire community to solve and to address it in any way. And so I'm really looking forward to our discussions with the county in the beginning of January, I believe it's January 8th. I think we have a meeting, a breakfast, and I'm looking forward to continuing our discussions with them. Then, in addition to the housing discussions, there's been consideration of temporary emergency shelter options for the winter, and I look forward to talking about those sooner, as it was discussed tonight at the podium. The cold nights and getting people out of the woods for the cold nights would be preferred. So I look forward to those continued discussions.
Councillor Bricky?
Well, in the spirit of Christmas and family, I just wanted to introduce my son Drew Bricky, sitting in the back. This is a familiar place to him, for all the years I was practicing architecture, still do. I'd be giving presentations to city council so regularly. In attendance on Tuesday nights was Drew and his little brother and sister, sitting in the back corner with Jack Rogers or whoever was sitting, staff was sitting in the back, doing their homework while I was doing my deal. So it's a kind of reunion for Drew to be here tonight. He's just finished a five-year career, as President Obama appointed him to be the Press Secretary for Veterans Affairs, second largest department of government, which he did for five years before he retired under Secretary Shinsuke. And then just recently, he escaped to Washington DC and moved to Charlotte, North Carolina, Davidson College, where his, my new daughter-in-law is on the faculty, just joined the faculty at Davidson College, where he went to school, actually, so it's a bit of a reunion for him there as well. So really happy, he's the first one that's come home. All kids born and raised in Durango come home for Christmas. And I'm looking for the other two now, but Drew made it here tonight, so thanks.
Well, welcome, Mr. Bricky. Councillor White?
Yeah, very briefly, just, I will be doing my weekly hear-to-hear meeting on Thursday from 11:30 to 12:30 across the hall in the city manager's conference room. I will not be meeting the following two weeks, resuming on January 8th, I guess it is. No, I guess it's the 10th. Anyway, I attended the, you know, not as, quite as weighty a meeting as you all, but I did attend the commencement at Fort Lewis College last Saturday along with city manager. It's always heartwarming to see young people making that transition. Great take-home lessons, don't be afraid to make mistakes, which I wish folks had told me when I was a young man. The, I'll reiterate the fact that the Adult Education Center graduation is Thursday evening, and our next city council meeting is Wednesday, the 2nd of January, rather than expecting people to come and have a city council meeting on January 1st.
Thank you very much, Councillor White. City Manager LeBlanc, the sales tax for October?
Sales tax for October came in at 6.4% above last year. It's actually the November report, but it reflects sales in October, and the lodgers' tax, I believe, was down like 0.3%. So sales tax is up for the year about 1.4%, and lodgers' tax is down for the year.
Let's hear it for city sales tax! We had a big mountain bike contest here in October, 2,500 people participated. That brought in events and lodging and food, as well as our Cowboy Heritage Poetry Week of activities. So I always celebrate, and we haven't had much to celebrate lately, folks, but the sales tax, that is a really good news for our city. I will say that I did call Senator Cory Gardner concerning the potential shutdown of the federal government. My concern was, of course, Mesa Verde Park because we see so many visitors. I said, Mayor of Durango is calling, and I'm really upset. Do something about it. I also called the Mayor Cortez, my friend, and she also called Scott Tipton. And Scott Tipton replied that it was going to be a minor inconvenience. And she said it wasn't minor, and the consequences were long-lasting. The last time this happened, Cortez had to have a fundraiser for the employees that live in Cortez and work at Mesa Verde. So we all are anticipating, looking for information about a potential shutdown, because that does impact our hotels here in Durango and our food services. If people decide not to go on vacation, guess what? We all suffer for it. So call your senators would be my advice. Step it up. I also wanted to mention that CDOT is investing, I think, millions of dollars in our community on 17th Street, 22nd Street, and 32nd. So we have been witnessing a lot of activity with CDOT, and they are investing in your community. And I really appreciate that. They're out there working tonight, this afternoon, when I came to city hall, I saw a guy I could see with just his white helmet, he's that far down in the ground. So I really appreciate CDOT stepping up and helping the Durango community, making it even a better place. I do have sad news to report, that Chief Wiggins, Chris Wiggins, passed away. Chief Wiggins came to work at the police department in 1962. In 1980, he became the chief of police for the City of Durango until 1991. He was the interim chief in 1993. He graduated from the FBI National Academy. I want to offer his family the condolences. Our city police department officers will have a shroud on their badges in honor of Chief Wiggins until Friday. There, it has not been announced the funeral plans, but please keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers. I worked with Chief Wiggins as the mayor in 2014, and also the mayor this summer.
I worked with Chief Wiggins as the mayor in 2014 and also the mayor this summer, and I always thought of his dedication to the officers on the street, to the retirees that he worked so diligently for, and for the widows of our retirees. I very much appreciated working with him in 2014 when I was the mayor, and we had the remembrance of the 1974 fire in the main mall. Chief Wiggins was there with the other corps of men that were on duty that day. So just keep them in your thoughts and prayers. With that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I'll see ya in 2019. Thanks for attending.